...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting, West Burlington City Council, order, roll call, please.
Crowder?
Here.
Rowley?
Here.
Hightmeier?
Here.
Lees?
Here.
Waterman?
To perfect approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion with support, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Carried, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through eight, which are in minutes from regular city council meeting on November twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Approved police reserve officer receivers attendance at the reserve officer training module, approved payment to City of Burlington for bus service, approved payment to Quat City Analytical, approved payment Burlington Public Library, approved payment Lynch Dallas for legal services, approved clerk's monthly financial report for October two thousand and eighteen, and approved claims list that's presented in the amount of eighty-four thousand six hundred dollars and ninety-six cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Rowley?
Aye.
Motion carried, hold those staff reports, Dan?
Uh, just a couple of things, reminder Leslie and I are gonna be at a conference on Friday this week, and next week on Thursday, I've got a guy coming in that's a retired SEAL Team Six operator that he, the main reason I'm talking to him is because he wants to get on one of our ICMA, to speak at one of our conferences, but he also consults with security and building security and that, so I'm gonna talk to him a little bit about that and see if that's maybe worth something to pursue a little bit, so I'll know more about that on a week from Thursday.
Anything else? Anybody have anything for Dan? Randy's not here. So far we're having snow this week, so we're okay. Jesse?
Uh, I have nothing, just Cody here.
Yep. Well, that's the next thing on my agenda here is to give Cody the oath of office, so you wanna step up here? Come around and... You wanna repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Cody Schluter.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer?
Discharge all the duties of the duty of the police officer?
In the City of West Burlington, Iowa?
In the City of West Burlington.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Sign this, make it official.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. You get pictures? No? Take some more.
Come here, young man. Cody.
Cody.
Thank you, sir, very much for doing this, okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we got Cody, uh, he has one year experience, he graduated Iowa Law Enforcement Academy last December, and he worked for Kia Cuck for the last year, he worked for us previous as a reserve officer before that for about a year, he did his internship through Western Illinois University, and he did it here at West Burlington and learned quite a bit, and we're glad to get him and put him on here.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You'd make a great addition.
Always nice like to see younger guys get into that.
Well, I'm younger than you, what the heck?
But not by much.
Randy?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Sean, what do you got?
Took care of a couple inspections last week, doing, working on some nuisances here in town, had some longstanding one, residential ones, we're following up on. There's a garage that's in the process of being torn down that I'm sure you're familiar with, at least a few of you already see daily, had just jumped through some loopholes with lawyers on the purchase of the property. Fireside, we did have a couple calls in Burlington, we had one that nice lovely snowy night, helped them out on that, turned out pretty good considering the weather and everything, and nobody got hurt from any of the departments or the public. Did have a minor repair to the aerial that was, kept it out of service, but it was for less than twenty-four hours, it's back in service and everything's getting going now.
Anybody have anything for Sean? Kelly?
Katie reported today that we are, we've done one thousand three hundred ninety-six meter replacements, so we have about twenty-five to thirty left, and then we'll be done with all of the big meters and residential meters.
That includes the large meters?
Yeah, that includes the large meters, there's just, there's some idle meters where the houses are vacant that those will just have to be kind of filled in as, as they become occupied, but...
Do you have to use the old system then to read those, or you just?
Well, they're off, they're, they're...
Or so they're just minimum pays?
Yeah, they're, they're either off and no charges right now, or just waiting to be reinstated, and when we reinstate it, then we'll go in and do a new meter there.
Leslie? Rod, you got anything going on?
I have nothing going on, sir, thank you very much.
Rick?
No, sir.
Royce? Trace?
I always have something going on, but not for here.
Alrighty, I've, under community reports, we got a presentation regarding a bike rack program by Jake, and you tell us your last name if I can't pronounce it.
My name is Jake Tonemi-Harjo, and I'm joined with by Dr. Carlson.
Where would you like me to, to be, stand or?
Uh, you can, if you wanna sit there, Dr. Carlson, that's fine, if you wanna stand, that's fine too.
Do you mind if I stand?
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
I feel worse sitting down here, so anyway, my name is Dave Carlson, I'm a family doctor down the, down the street a little ways. The, I'm here to make you an offer you hopefully can't refuse, and also to solicit your support. Obesity is a, a quote growing, end quote, problem in our country, and as part of our community needs assessments, over the last few years, we have identified obesity as a problem particularly in this area, and a group of us started meeting to talk about what we could do to help with the activity side of that equation, things that aren't already being done, and we affectionately call, call ourselves the Citizens for Active Transportation, CFAT, that's kind of a joke, you know, that was, anyway. The, we were, we were in hopes of trying to leverage resources, which at the time were zero, to try to, to look into what could we do to help the community get more active, and we looked at the various trails, there was a, a plan for, for expanding the trail system in this area, the Burlington, West Burlington corridor in particular, that was put together several years ago, and what we discovered was that the price of working like adding a bike trail, for example, is quite cost prohibitive, and really requires dollars that were way beyond what our capabilities were, and so in an effort to leverage, leverage limited dollars, we applied for a grant from Wellmark and were given a community matching grant to get bike racks, and this is an example of one of them, and our idea here is to use, we call the color active green, and we have placed them in different locations around town, you've probably seen them around town, and hopefully you will see them more and more, and our, the idea is we would like to move towards having all bike racks in this area eventually become the same color, so that people will recognize that there's a bike rack sitting outside of wherever, and people will hopefully start riding their bikes more. So it's really kind of part of a more, a bigger master plan to get people moving. The SCC auto paint program has offered to, to paint existing bike racks at cost, which will actually be very little because the, the students are gonna do it, we just have to be able to supply the paint, basically, but as part of the Wellmark grant, we got these, we got a, a whole bunch of them.
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty bike racks, and we would like to place some in, on public property in West Burlington, so that's the concept, and I'll turn it over to Jake to fill in the details, and I think you have a, you have a little handout here that Jake has prepared too, so...
So I kinda laid out a four-phase project, and I apologize if not everyone got a copy, but I'll kinda lay it out, as we first wanted to install a hundred of these throughout the community in different locations, in high-traffic locations, and for West Burlington, we considered Lures Park, Community Field, and, and downtown West Burlington on the Broadway area as possible locations for those high-traffic locations. We also wanted to install some bicycle aid stations, which you can see here at the bottom, there's different pictures, one is of Notre Dame, they've been one of our partners, they installed a three racks and then in a bicycle aid station that can be used by the public, and the idea being is just to place these in different strategic locations throughout our community. We also placed one at the North Corge Hiking and Mountain Bike Trail, and we also helped pay for a water fountain at that facility too, hoping to help just generate some foot traffic in these locations and get people more active. As you can see, this last picture is just a picture of a bike with the, with the bike racks, and that's in the downtown Burlington area, but again, our hope is to expand that. We've also worked with Minneapolis and the Danville School District, and we're hoping to expand there, so it's more so a Des Moines County initiative than just say Burlington. So as I, our project update is currently, is we've distributed a hundred and twenty-seven bike racks throughout Danville, Minneapolis, and Burlington, and we also provided some to Des Moines County Conservation. We have about thirty-three bike racks left, and I'd hoped to set aside a good chunk of those for West Burlington as well, I highlighted eight locations, but we could be amenable to giving up to twelve, we don't expect any costs from West Burlington, the only thing that we ask is that you install them utilizing your own resources, that's mostly because for all public right-of-way, that you usually have to be handled by city individuals anyways. Our hope here is really, just a tipping point, I think Dr. Carlson talked about this at one of our meetings, we don't expect there to be this massive movement towards bike, but we wanna start offering these infrastructural places for people to do so, and I think this is that first big step towards that. Bike racks was an option for us, but we see it kind of expanding from there, this color green is actually utilized in a lot of cities to delineate bike lanes and delineate other locations where bikes are available, so it was a way to kind of help to spur that movement towards it, I know we don't exactly have painted bike lanes just yet, but I foresee that in the future for this community. So again, some of my recommendations for West Burlington is that we possibly install two, two bike racks at Lures Park, four at the West Burlington Pool and Community Park, and then two in the downtown area, with the option of maybe adding four to your, to your or your city council or any other individuals liking, so that's pretty much just summation of our kind of project, but we'll welcome any questions, thoughts, or just interest at all.
So each rack, basically, two bikes?
Yep, two bikes per, you could get probably pretty creative and put four, but it's recommended to put two.
Several bikers part of the work group, I don't bike a lot, Jake does some, we have lots of bikers, they're, they're kinda picky about what kind of a bike rack they want, 'cause the ones that we all used when we were kids, you know, that you put the tire in and all that, I forget what they call those, I think they call them tire busters or something like that, 'cause they, they tend to damage the tires, they get pushed around, pushed.
And the relative impact on this is pretty small, as you can kinda see here, it's about a five-by-five bottom plate, so you can place one in a location or maybe multiples, that's kind of the point, is they can stack, or you can keep them at one at a time. And they also work with your classic U-lock or a rope, rope lock of some caliber too, so that's kind of a multiple uses.
I think we see more and more commuters on bicycles, and probably will see more and more in that future, I think it's a great idea, I'd like to see you get together with our Public Works Director and see, you know, what the best places are to actually put them, and then to get some out of it.
Yep, and Zach James from Southeast Southern Regional Planning would've came, but he actually had to coach some basketball tonight, but we worked with him on selecting some locations as well, but we're happy to work with Public Works and make sure to finalize any final locations before we, these are just recommendations that I highlighted from our group.
And they're free?
Yes. We are charging time...
We don't get much stuff free.
Yeah, I mean, that's the point of this grant, we, we saw it as an opportunity to support our communities in all of their shapes and forms, and we thought that this would be a good opportunity to kinda get different folks engaged, we do have a couple of different bike, local bike folks involved with this, and they obviously have some, some thoughts on where do we go, so we know that we can kinda push this, and I've seen West Burlington kind of take on some new initiatives, putting a bike route in the middle of the town like this, and really offering it, and I think it's just a good opportunity, we also worked with West Burlington Schools on getting these, I don't know if they've installed them just yet, but I have, was, I did give them a few of them, so...
Anybody have any questions? Comments? I don't hear anybody making any objections, so I would...
Good deal, well, I'll reach out to Randy Frye and try to find some possible locations, and if it needs to come back to the city council, so be it, but I look forward to working with you all.
I think we trust Randy's judgment.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You don't have to leave, Dr. Carlson, because this next thing is pretty interesting too. Jamie and Terror is gonna be presenting that. Before I do that, anybody in the audience wishes to address the council matters we have discussed or have not discussed yet? Nobody's risen, so, we'll go to new business, item number one, which is consider the employee wellness program for twenty nineteen, and Jamie and Terror here.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, good to see you again, so we're back to report on the year two thousand eighteen's wellness program, we did have eleven employees that went through the wellness program, I will say two of those were officers, okay, so we had kind of on both sides here, we just finished up our wellness program this, actually November thirtieth, so just fresh out of the bones of it, we finished the screenings just a few weeks ago, so I was able to quickly compile some numbers for you guys in order for you to kinda get an idea of what happened. First and foremost, on our biometric markers from our wellness screening, we did have five employees that passed with three or more biometric markers that were based on metabolic syndrome, we did have one person actually have an improvement to have at least a ten percent on other biometrics to give three of five, so therefore that kind of pushed it to six that had good enough standing biometrics, and therefore we had five that did not pass their biometrics in some way. So looking at your document that I gave you guys, kinda give you a synopsis of what's happened since two thousand sixteen, you'll notice that, that first screening component is showing you high-risk levels and percentages of individuals, so from two thousand and sixteen up into two thousand and eighteen, we have seen some improvements between blood pressures, total cholesterol, triglycerides, and even some of the waste and glucose kind of have fluctuated a little bit, but more importantly, one of the things about biometrics that you should be concerned about is that we can't constantly or change all of these, so they're kind of, kind of snapshots for us to get an idea of what's happening through the years, obviously, small changes sometimes aren't noticeable, but when you look at long-term changes, it's a better indication that something's happening. So biometrics are one way to look at the wellness program, but they're not always the best, you also notice down below that we've got kind of risk status, so low risk, moderate or high risk, and it's based on several options that happen through the health survey that they do take, and you'll notice that we have had improvement from two thousand and sixteen on the low risk and a little bit on the moderate, what you will find that is one person will shift from group to group makes a very large impact, so you'll notice that the percentages look quite differently, so with a small group such as City of West Burlington of eleven people, one person making a shift from one group to another is gonna make some pretty big waves, so we can't always just judge based on this outlook to see kind of what happens in one year's time, but the nice thing is that their wellness score throughout the two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen year has remained quite steady, that means they haven't had like a high number of risks being added to them, and also their wellness score has been pretty average, so that's kind of a nice thing to see, because biometrics, yes, may look a little outstanding at times, but yet their wellness score is pretty relevant and maintained, so that's a really good important part to consider. If you turn the page, this is your participation level in terms of what we've been doing, this is just one portion of it, obviously, preventative care is a really, obviously important part of the program, because we want individuals to utilize their insurance and get their routine exams as much as possible, this snapshot right here is just for annual physicals, so you'll notice that we have had improvements from last year to this year on individuals getting their annual exams, and the great thing about the annual exams is it's going to help catch things early on, such as illnesses and diseases that are going to increase medical care costs, I wanna let you know that that has happened this year, okay, no names are gonna be released, but just know that illnesses that could have significant impact, not only on medical care costs, but even life expectancy, were found, so I wanna make sure you understand that preventative care is important and it worked well this year for us in that aspect. When it comes to participation on things on our end, such as education seminars, wellness walks, and even group workouts that we have, you can see the attendance is relatively stable, two thousand eighteen does look a little bit less, okay, and that's because two thousand eighteen for this year had a lot more opportunity to earn points, meaning they didn't have to necessarily come to each thing and to get a reward, so to speak, so you'll notice the percentages are slight lower for this year, but in reality, we did have some really great participation throughout the year, okay, cooking demos, of course, are always a popular, when there's free food, they're coming, okay? So I gave some synopsis on the back pages in terms of, you know, two thousand eighteen, I do wanna let you know that the wellness program is a very important piece, I think, to any company, and especially for this company and alarming numbers, because you have quite a few individuals that are in the older age bracket where you're gonna be seeing retirement occurring in the next, you know, maybe five to eight years, these are precious time for these individuals, because that's when you start to see risk of illness and disease increase even more, so oftentimes, while it might seem kind of redundant to keep putting money into a wellness program if you're not seeing major improvements, but the problem is if you don't potentially put money into preventative care and things of that nature, you might be actually having higher medical costs later on, due to the fact that a wellness program is having an external motivation behind it, many employees need that little extra push to just come, listen, learn about what's happening with their health at the moment and health in the future, so that that way we can maybe catch something early on and reduce the idea of early retirement and bringing on someone new, so spending a little now may save a much more later on, which is what we really hope to do, so obviously, the wellness program moving forward is going to be very different, giving you some highlights in terms of what I'm proposing for administration this year, is that we are going to take them off the portal, so in the past five years, you, the city administrative who have been on the employee wellness program have been using some type of online technology, I think now is a time for change, motivation to use that external portal has kind of been a little bit lower, so why not pull them off and kind of go to that grassroots movement of wellness, which is paper-based tracking and more individualized coaching, and so that's kind of what I'm proposing, I would like to do more individual coaching for each person, kinda give them an idea that they can express their concerns with me on a much more individual level versus in a group setting, which some of them then may not do very well, and then really focus in on the fitness aspect of it, because this group knows nutrition, they understand what they're supposed to be doing, but oftentimes, physical activity is still very confusing on what you should be doing, how much you should be doing of it, and even trying something new for what's happening, because injury is a really common thing, especially with our public work, workers, who are outside constantly moving, and sometimes not in the best ergonomic way, so we need to make sure that they are really working on form more importantly, so the proposed program for two thousand nineteen is to kind of focus on those main aspects, you'll notice that on the, I gave you a kind of program proposal in terms of cost, we are staying relatively similar as to what we had last year with just a slight maybe hundred dollars less, which might entice you a little bit, but we're basically reallocating dollars away from the portal and pulling it back in to give them a little bit better opportunity for improvement, so that's kind of the West Burlington two thousand eighteen synopsis into a pro, proposed program for two thousand nineteen, do you have questions about that specific program at the moment? Or concerns or questions?
Do you guys just have a meeting and just talk about what goes on? Or do you exercise, do you do a stress hard exercise?
So are you turn, in terms of testing a person or just exercise in general?
Say, like, yeah, in a way, I mean, over since two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, then you should be able to see quite a bit of difference.
So I have not done any...
Weight-wise or otherwise?
So I have not done any fitness testing with this group, we have only just kind of exercised at a very low to moderate intensity, fitness testing is something that actually would be done in this new program, so actually tracking a change from pre to post to get a better understanding of what's happening to muscular endurance, muscular strength, cardio-respiratory fitness, and flexibility as a whole, in the past programs, you're just kind of giving generic guidelines as to what they should be doing, the exercise classes that I've been holding are, number one, just wellness walks, where they're thirty minutes, and if you've ever walked with some of them, it's a little difficult at times 'cause they walk really fast, or some walk a little bit slower, so it's kind of their pace, and then I've been holding group workouts in the mornings from six to seven AM twice a month, but it's kind of up to them if they want to come, the ones that have been coming have had pretty great successes, but again, it's the ones who are coming to it and not necessarily doing it on their own.
Is that the reason for the five that didn't pass their biometrics, they didn't actively participate, where did they drop off, halfway through the program, or they just thought?
So my speculation is that we actually had quite a bit of illness and injury this year, which did not allow them to participate, whether that's injuries with feet, injuries with back, or anything of that nature, that just didn't come to the wellness walks, or didn't do enough working out on their own, and I think that really dampened the motivation behind participating, so my hope is that if we can do more individual-based stuff, that would help, but obviously, it's, it's an internal motivator for each of these employees, honestly.
So, I have a background of a lot of things, but I'm not gonna get into it, but they removed a bone from my foot, so it's a little hard for me to walk, you know, for a long period of distance, so what I did was switch from the treadmills to the bicycle.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if these people, if they have an injury, why they can't switch from one to a stable bicycle instead of the treadmill or walking down the street, and they could ride a bike?
And they most certainly can.
On a, yeah.
They most certainly can, I can attest that some of them are moving so much during the day with their manual labor job, that it's, they're not wanting to go and exercise because they're still kind of feeling the effects of it.
I'm gonna throw, like, other questions, do you get into weightlifting too?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yes, you can, yes, just... Oh, yes, you can, yes, just get on, just get on that one.
Ringo's shaking his head back there, so.
We, we lift, we utilize that gym quite well downstairs.
Yeah. Because I believe in it, they don't have to be heavy. I believe in reps instead of being heavy.
Yes.
That's what we do, so.
That's what we do.
Yeah, okay.
We are typically a, a light to moderate weight with high reps.
I couldn't walk last week. But from the time we started this till today, we're not going backwards, are we?
Not in terms, I think, that it's a de- a desire to stop the wellness program. You're just gonna start to see-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about health-wise with the employees.
Not major, no. You're gonna get bumps in the road here and there, and that's pretty normal.
We get, all get a year older every year, so.
Right.
That makes a difference.
So that most people, when they get older, they get into diabetes. I've been there in that. So what always gets me is that it used to be one forty was the low. You get over one forty or somewhere higher than that, all of a sudden, you're a diabetic and that stuff in there. So it, it seems like now the doctors just wanna keep dropping and dropping and dropping and dropping till sooner or later it'll be eighty-nine and you have to take metformin. So, um, I just-
Don't worry about it.
Just tired of taking pills, you know, popping pills.
The, I mean, the research is showing that it's really a continuum, that people have risk regardless. I mean, and we're a country, you know, you go into a grade school today and you look around and you see the, the kids are a lot bigger than they used to be.
Well, I'm, I'm not arguing, I, I've been a coach for thirty-four years and I understand it. And you want your tackles to be three hundred pounds and you want your running backs to be a hundred and eighty-seven. So, eh, that's, yeah, I, you know, and I can understand. Then all of a sudden, they quit playing football, so they get up to four hundred pounds and now you gotta lose all that weight and get down, so.
Well, but the, the risks, the risks really are a continuum. And that's the reason that the national and international organizations are pushing the norms down. It's down to one twenty-six now, but we're even identifying people with prediabetes. I happen to be one of them. My blood sugar's not diabetic, but it's not perfect either. And so I'm trying to do things that I can do to make a change, and it's not easy.
Well, it, it's, it's not, yeah.
Persistence is the hardest part, you know? It's, it's one thing to do it for six months, it's another thing to do it for the rest of your life.
Yeah, we do.
Well, my folks are just diabetics, so I was, my brother and I live with it. I mean, that's, and we gotta exercise, weight lift, and everything else on a daily basis. So do we get tired of it? Yes. Do we cheat? Yes.
You're only human.
It is Christmas after all.
Hmm?
Yeah.
It's Christmas after all.
Well, you dial, dial, dial your scale back ten pounds.
Well, I can joke around, I said, my doctor says come back and get your physical in January eighth. And I said, no way in hell am I gonna come back, you know? My A-one C will be sky high by then.
Okay.
Alrighty. Thanks.
Are there other questions about the administration side of this year's program?
No, I, I think it's, it's, you know, I've always been supportive of it and I think we need to continue it. And, you know, if, if it does one person good, it's worth it.
And that's, it's hard to put a dollar amount on something like that. If you can catch something on its early stages and get it treated before it does progress and then cost even more money on those insurance premiums, sometimes that kind of is the bigger picture than just naturally overall cost. Um, I do want to throw out that obviously we have a new chief. And so he has expressed interest in pulling the police back in to do a wellness program as well. Um, with his success, he knows that it does work well. And the officers that we do have are actually in great health, all right? Oftentimes, though, there might be certain topics or ideas that they may not know a lot about or just need some help with. So basically, with the two officers who participated this year, you know, they did participate, they're going through the motions, they're working on their fitness, and that's kind of really all we ask, right? From two thousand seventeen, we learned a big lesson that these officers do enough paperwork and they don't like to track. So participation on that end was quite low. Yet we yielded some really good positive results. In fact, I do have them, and from the fitness testing that we did, a hundred percent of them improved their one and a half mile run, eighty-five percent improved their push-ups, a hundred percent improved their setups, and seventy-one improved their sit and reach score. So even from what we did in two thousand seven, meaning that the program didn't go as planned, we still had some great improvements from it. And that's kind of what we're asking, is that our police officers stay fit for duty. And so can we make sure that they are getting an overall fitness program? Because maybe some only focus on strength, maybe some really focus heavy on cardio. Can we have an overall program where everything is put into there? So for the police program, um, we're kind of thinking along, along the lines of having the fitness testing still be there with the goal of having all officers pass it at a forty percent minimum, which is what they're coming out of the academy at. Now, currently, the officers are allowed to do fitness testing. And if they pass at forty percent, they do get a full day of PTO. So that's gonna stay in place, and we're just gonna kind of piggyback off of that again. So if we're seeing improvements, we're gonna reward them with that. Um, we're still gonna have challenges, but we're gonna do challenges based on things that would help them improve their fitness and improve their overall feeling as being an officer. Uh, we know that back is an issue with belts and sitting all day in cars or sitting at the desk. We're seeing low back pain. Um, we wanna make sure that they're stable. If one side is heavier than the other from carrying too much on the body, we wanna make sure the instability is not an issue. So we're gonna put that as in the themes of the program. So quarterly, there's gonna be four themes, whether it's going to be newsletters for education and then a challenge where they're tracking. Now, the tracking is gonna be quite simple. There's gonna be a binder downstairs in the gym where they're signing in. So there's no papers or nothing getting turned in, it's nice, simple check marks. And then for challenges, there's gonna be a whiteboard that's hung inside the office. So everyone sees what's happening and kind of gives some friendly competition to maybe motivate others what they're doing and push them along the way. That's the, the goal and hopes, right? So as a unit, we kind of wanna make sure that all officers are, you know, doing the best of their ability so that they can protect and serve and stay healthy to have the best job performance as possible. So there is a proposed, uh, cost as well on the backside. You'll notice that, um, wellness screenings are a little bit hefty and that's because it's been a full year since we've done anything. We need to get some pre-standards on them. And then the four quarterly challenges, newsletters, and fitness testing. They're gonna be able to come to the food demos as it's included and they can come to the walks and workouts as well, since I'm already doing that for the administrative side. So we're seeing an estimated extra expense of fourteen hundred just for the police officers, which is not much different from the last time we did this.
You didn't mention too much about the PTO and incentives, your plan is to keep the same for those?
Yes, sorry. Um, both administrative and police will have the same incentives as they did this past year, so that's not changing. However, there is thought for the police officers to potentially kind of give back whatever they earn and put it into the funding for the gym downstairs. That was kind of a buzzer when we talked about it because everyone loves some new exercise equipment downstairs. So when I said the word battle ropes, sleds, and things of that nature, eyes lit up. So that potentially might be an option for them instead of keeping the PTO hours or money that they can donate it back in, um, for extra equipment and funds.
So everybody think?
I'd make a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen wellness program renewal.
Support.
Motion with support, any further discussion? Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, have a wonderful evening.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd like to thank the council, we appreciate it.
Item number two is to consider purchase of a flow meter for the fire department. In the amount of one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars plus shipping.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Lees? Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number three is consider purchase of Little Hose Monster hydrant test kit for the fire department. The amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and fourteen cents.
Motion approved, support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
Names make you wonder what some of this stuff really is.
I don't make these names up.
Okay.
Roll call.
But how often do, how often are you gonna check the hydrants then?
The three hundred hydrants, we'll kind of force them to town off and do a section and try and get our way through. I get the ones that I get phone calls on most often in those areas, uh, like out of college and more of our commercial areas. Do get more on the building side is where I get asked that question, especially for when they're calculating flow rates for their sprinkler systems. So try and get the city done within five years to be the overall goal or sooner.
Will you check them when you get called to a fire after the fire's out and stuff? Would that be an opportunity to do that?
Be an opportunity to do that also is to check them if we have a fire in town. And that way you can have a better idea, because I have been asked by, um, Katie to try and keep track of how much water we flow, even at training. Training, that would be an opportunity to get an idea how much we're blowing also. I think she's trying to track how much we're wasting the water.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number four is consider contract with Firecat for fire hose testing. Uh, three-year contract at tw- twenty-seven seventy-five per year.
Motion approved.
Support. Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Appreciate that one, I'm like, yes, happy.
He's smiling down there.
Well, you, you only got about half the hose of what you used to have.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Item number five is consider purchase of police department uniforms for Officer Schluter. Amount of one thousand eighty-five dollars.
Some move. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number six is to consider the payment to Snyder Associate for Engineering Services related to wastewater facility project and lift station replacement project. The amount of nine thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Some move. Support.
Is there an additional five thousand two hundred and fifty or is that?
I was gonna, that's, yeah, uh.
It is.
I thought that was both of them together, or is that separate? I've got, I've got both numbers written down, but I couldn't remember if that was.
It's, they're, I mean, there's two amounts, nine thousand eight hundred and fifty.
And, and the five thousand two hundred and fifty.
I'll just identify them as different projects.
Roll call.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number seven is consider payment to Ferguson Water Works for work completed on the water meter replacement project. The amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. That finishes out that project.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support.
Wesley, can you tell me?
Why, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to know what the final, because what we had approved earlier, we went up above the contracted price. We had to make amendments for different.
We've had a Winger do some too, I'm getting back to you the total cost.
Just send me the whole total. Thank you.
Why would we be making them a final payment when Kelly just said we had twenty-five or thirty more meters to install?
Another company is doing that, Winger's doing those, because there's those, there's those big ones and confined space ones that this company wasn't gonna do.
So this company has done all they're gonna do?
This company's done.
We're done with them, period.
All the residential ones, the only thing that was left are the ones that, um, either the kind, the confined space ones and the meters that have had issues with the plumbing before and after the meters. That's what's Winger's doing, so we'll have a bill from Winger.
Okay.
We've already paid them once for, didn't we?
Par- partially, they, they're doing some all along, they're, they're still working in town.
Okay, roll call.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number eight is consider resolution authorizing internal advance to TIF for legal services related to two thousand eighteen urban renewal plan amendment in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Motion carried. Now, item number nine is consider payment to Dorsey for legal service related to two thousand eighteen urban renewal plan amendment in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Leslie, would you please send these people a letter requesting a donation for last year's Fourth of July event?
Which, which one?
Yes.
Dorsey or?
Sure.
Or Ferguson?
Eh, no, not Ferguson, Dorsey. No, we didn't. But we need to send them one.
And close it in the bill.
They've been waiting.
Thank you.
Yeah, withhold ten percent. Do we roll call that?
Roll call. I, I need to do a roll call. Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number ten is consider final reading an ordinance amending city code pertaining interference with official acts.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
Still no comments.
No more, no comments, alright. Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number eleven is consider final reading an ordinance amending city code pertaining to water service disconnections.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number twelve is consider final reading an ordinance amending city code pertaining to texting or using a mobile telephone while operating a commercial vehicle.
Motion approve.
One of you needs seconded, I got you both.
I, 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 Tr- tree seconded it.
Okay.
In twenty-five minutes.
Any discussion?
Kelly, do you have any public comment on any of these?
No, none of them.
Nothing?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number thirteen is consider final reading an ordinance amending city code pertaining to cigarette and tobacco permits.
Some of it. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is consider final reading an ordinance amending city code pertaining to alcoholic beverage control.
Some move. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number fifteen is consider the final reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map by rezoning a portion of ground at the corner of North Gear Avenue and Mulberry Lane from A-one to R-three.
No comments or anything on that, Kelly?
No.
Some move. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number sixteen is consider reading an ordinance demanding city code related building codes.
Some move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number seventeen is consider reading an ordinance demanding city code related fire codes.
Some move. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Knight Meyer?
Hi.
Lees?
Hi.
Crowner?
Motion carried. Somebody have any old business?
Yeah, I got one thing to ask. It's kind of new on that one. Uh, ambulance, when they drive down the road on this three lane, are you guys gonna use the center lane? Because that led into a problem, I thought, the other day. When I pulled off to the side to the bicycle trail, but the ambulance kept going right down the middle of the, of the aisle, but there was a car that pulled in the middle lane and then he had to swerve and go around that and go. I, I'd really rather him just go down the center lane and-
By law, you're supposed to move to the right.
That's correct and that's, yeah.
Go down, go over to the right and yield to emergency vehicles, be it law enforcement, fire, ambulance, EMS, whatever. Um, so whoever pulled in the center lane, get it run.
You know, I don't know if they hurt him or anything like that. It's just that they pulled in the center lane. I almost debated about just going in the center lane.
My plan would, I'm gonna shoot down the center lane.
What I did today.
Because most people are gonna-
That's what I did today.
Okay, I did, you know, if anybody asks me, I'm just gonna tell them to get over in a bicycle lane. You know.
As long as there's not someone riding their bike in that path, then-
Right. But I know somebody's gonna sit there and tell me that, why does a fire truck go down there? And I said the same way as other people do, I mean.
Fire trucks are red and-
I've seen one guy start in the center lane for about five miles to make the turn. That's all right. Okay, I just wondered.
I had some real guy must've got his driver's license and a bubble gum machine the other day. The ambulance was coming, going towards, you know, east on Mount Pleasant and West Burlington Avenue. Here comes a guy, everybody that was on, going westbound, pulled over to the right. But this one fine gentleman, uh, he kept coming and went into the turn lane to go on the west-
Center lane.
Burlington Avenue. Well, it's not a center lane, it's a turn lane.
Well, yeah. I thought it was a passing lane myself.
Ambulance had to jog around him.
I do have one question for all of you and that's regarding the fireworks ordinance. Do you have any problems with the way the current ordinance is or would you like to see any changes done to it? I've, the reason I ask is I've seen and, um, read a lot of emails back and forth with the different chiefs in Iowa where some of them have gone from having an ordinance similar to ours to doing a total, no allowing anything short of sprinklers, you know, the sparklers and snakes. And they're catching a lot of, I, then you go and read the newspaper the next, after that and they're catching a lot of heat. I think we've got a pretty good ordinance overall, but if you've got any, if you'd like to see some changes made or suggestions.
I had, you know, I've hadn't heard anybody complain to me or heard anybody saying anything about what we've done or what you had done on the ordinance with fireworks. I just, till we do, I mean, sure, we get some of them out there, even over, uh, my area to sneak over to a mall and shoot a cannon off, but it's Jesse's turn to catch them.
No matter what we do, we're still gonna have those that are gonna shoot them off in violation of our ordinance. But I think by allowing it, we're still trying to act in the interest of the citizens and let them enjoy themselves for that time period.
Oh, yeah. What's the timeframe on the shooting the fireworks?
We're supposed to be done shooting them by eleven o'clock on the Fourth of Ju- the night of the Fourth of July.
But they're not supposed to shoot in town at all?
They're not supposed to shoot within fifty feet of a, of a residential structure and anywhere that we block off for like special events like the Fourth of July.
Pretty much in the guts of town, the main guts. Well, I just wonder how I got so many bottle rockets on my roof at the mini storage.
When do they start, where can they start selling this month?
They can do it on New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve.
Yeah, but they could start selling them here in the next week or two years.
It's like the eighth.
But it's, yeah, it's, they can start selling them, but I have not, I did not get any requests, no applications, nothing, so.
Walmart, Target?
Anyone selling them in town. Yeah, no notification from the state fire marshal's office, fireworks companies, none of them for the winter sale for the New Year's Eve ones.
I don't think the summer sales went as well as they thought they were gonna go, so we, we aren't in a huge hurry.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? entertain a motion adjourned.
Some support.
Those in favor?
Hi.
These adjourned. Thank you.